This is the Diamond Regional School Committee meeting for September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Local.
Mr. Jennings?
Here.
Mr. Diviasio?
Here.
Mr. Beegan?
Here.
Ms. Menard?
Here.
Father Jay?
Here.
Dr. Nara?
Yes.
We have a call. In accordance to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty, app, any member of the public may make an audio or video recording of a public meeting. A member of this public who wishes to recall the meeting must first notify the chair and must comply with the reasonable requirements regarding audio or video equipment established by the chair as not to interfere with the meeting. Is anybody recording the meeting?
Mr. Matos?
All right, please agree.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a motion to approve the August tenth, two thousand twenty-three matters?
Motion made.
Need a second?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying. We have the student report.
Good evening, everyone. We did have to substitute Ryan for this month, but I'm excited to introduce Hayley Pereira. Hayley is a senior in our culinary arts shop, very involved student, very good student as well. Does a lot of clubs, such as Student Government Theater Arts. Excited to have her tonight. Hayley?
So some clubs that we have are the school is offering many clubs and activities and courses. We had a good transition from the summer vacation. Theater Arts is returning to M E T G, which is our mass educational theater guild this year. And we have a lot more clubs that are being enjoyed by freshmen. Some negatives are athletics are doing their best with their situation of having multiple practice facilities while they are trying to establish your routine. The teams have started off well. Hundreds of student athletes, families, coaches support each other. And coaches and admin industry have had a good steady stream of communication. Working with Mr. Rabello on the issue of getting two practices and the practice facilities and how it can be solved. We asked for athletics. We had five hundred original signups for the fall season, and we have three hundred and ten athletes after cuts. Cross country is off to a good start competing in an invitation relay versus Derby this past Tuesday. Football lost a case this past Friday night, but there was a great showing of support and should get a few people back from injuries. Cheer performed under Friday Night Lights and is getting ready for competitions along with the dance team. Soccer, both boys and girls fought hard against Derby but took but look to challenge the Mayflower lead this year. Golf is off to a good start splitting their matches, and volleyball looks good, started two and oh to the start of the year.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
Any questions or comments?
Excellent.
Good. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hayley. How's school so far, Hayley?
Yeah, question?
I have a question for Mr. Rabello, actually. She mentioned that we had five hundred signups for athletics, but three hundred and ten after cuts. Were we able to provide enough levels of each sport for these kids? In the past, we've had freshman level called Sports JV varsity. Were we able to provide?
No, no, we didn't cut any sports. We didn't cut any sports. The some of the issues we're running into is for transportation. Okay, being able because everything is off campus right now. In even practices, we're busing kids to practice as well. So some sports did have to make cuts.
Okay. All right, just want to make sure we're giving ample opportunities to the students. Okay. Thank you.
Hayley, though, back to my question. How's school going so far over the first days?
I really enjoy my schedule, especially the sociology and the psychology courses that are being offered. I'm really offered last year. I don't know if they were offered to students last year.
Yeah, we've had them for a few years.
I don't know.
Yeah, that's great, though. Awesome.
All right, good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Moving on to one twenty-five. Anybody here for citizen input?
No.
We have nothing on unfinished business on the new business, three twenty-one. We have the MSBA, we are doing nothing. Mr. Diviasio?
At this point, Castle Boots has sent in the documents for ninety percent construction document package. And the estimators have it now, and we expect it back in October. Motion made for good news on that. Final documents will be complete in December and distributed for bidding and procurement. The testing agency for construction materials has been selected by the building committee based on the review proposals provided by Colliers, the O P M. Suffolk has several bid packages currently being bid. That includes site concrete, structural steel. The project team has gone through one round of developing meetings with bidders and are anticipating revised bids for early packages this month. Additional packages for pre-purchase of the generator and the electrical switch gear are currently bidding to address industry-wide long lead times. The equipment will be assigned to the electrical contractors for the project once they are on board to avoid project delays. Temporary parking on the west side of the building is in place and being used by the teachers at this time. The access lane for the student parking lot is in place. Early drive lane work on the east side of the building was put in place to allow for the full construction barrier to be installed by the permanent site contractor once they are selected. The administration is working with the project team, has set a groundbreaking date of November third. The only calendars, guys, for eleven thirty. And I believe we did hear back from the MSBA?
We have. I'll have an update in just a few moments for you.
Okay. And right now, I'll let Mr. Bentley discuss if we agree as far as the groundbreaking ceremony. Mr. Bentley?
Thank you. In your packet, buried towards the end, you should see something that looks exactly like this. Okay, and I've included to you the most recent communications and what we're starting to put together. This is all in draft. All right, so just to go through it, this would be a sample of the invitation. It is on Friday. It is November the third, two thousand twenty-three. The time, we've had to alter the time after speaking with Mr. Benabides in order to allow our time to set everything up. It just the way that it'll move now is that on that particular day, school will be dismissed at eleven A M. Everyone from the students will be invited to, of course, remain and watch the once-in-a-lifetime groundbreaking ceremony. We are then going to have arrival by our guests starting to amass in room two fifty-one for some light refreshments around twelve noon. And then the ceremony itself will take place at one. What is the ceremony, what do we envision it looking like? If you take a look on the next page, we're going to have an excavator in the background. This is working now with Suffolk. I had Suffolk, Castle Boots, and Colliers the other day on a Zoom meeting. Then we were discussing the particulars. These are screen grabs from other schools who have something like this as a backdrop, so it'll look dynamic. The next page is what the shovels for the ceremonial shovels for the shovels of dirt. This is what Derby used. Ours, of course, will have orange and black ribbons, but it'll be similar to this. There's twenty-four that we're planning on, and I'm still working out those logistics. Okay, and then the next page, there's a couple of good suggestions that were made. Unfortunately, what we had originally planned, which was to have it down on the bleachers, is non-existent because the bleachers will be destroyed. So we're not there anymore. Where we are instead is going to be a backdrop against looking out on the field with the green wrought iron fences and the medallions are there. This will be all set up and prettied up. There's going to be what they call a sandbox, which is on that last page, and this will be dirt that'll be put into something that'll have diamond groundbreaking, the date, November three, twenty-three. And groups of twelves are more for the how we're going to do it. This will allow people to come up with a ceremonial shovel, dirt, hot hat, picture-taking opportunity. We're setting up the logistics of who's going to be there for the first shovelfuls. And then the concept that I'm having behind this is that anybody who does want to do it, let's suppose our culinary arts department representatives who are there, they want to be in the picture that they were paying in their shop. They would get to use the shovel and so on. But dignitaries would have the opportunity for a picture taken. There's going to be invitations that'll be sent out right up to the state level and the local level. There is a program that I'm putting together right now that'll have recognition. It'll have very few speeches, as this is all about the groundbreaking event and not about the politicians making speeches, although they are instrumental in affording us the opportunity to build a new school. So it should conclude, starting at one o'clock, all according to plan, should be done within about forty-five minutes to an hour, and the picture opportunities will be there. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, so those people who want to participate and get a picture, this is their chance. For us, this is going to Disney World, and it's a chance to build a future, literally. So that's the plan. More will be coming out. We're on kind of a tight timeline right now. I can't give enough thanks to Helena over there, who's been putting together. It's like planning a wedding. She has the Bible going. Sorry, Father. She has the binder going of how this should go. So right now, we are on a timeline. We have a date. We're hearing back from those who can't participate. For this group, November third, please keep your calendar open, please. Well, thank you for inviting us. You'll be there with a show, okay? Definitely. Questions, though, from anybody? Thank you. Please, if you have them, please ask.
Free qual- prequalification committee?
I think there's, Mr. Chairman, I think there's project expenditures.
Well, that's the one I have next. Expenditures first.
I jumped out a lot of.
Mr. Diviasio, if you want to name who's on the prequalification committee and then a vote to reaffirm what's already been established.
Yes. So when we prequal, committee will be Mr. Brian Bentley, Mr. Paul Kitchen, Mr. Tim Alex from Colliers, and Mr. Greg Join from Castle Boots.
Just very quickly, this was all, this was a statutory requirement.
Well, I'm sorry. Before, so she has it for the record, on Mr. Tim Alex or Mr. Greg Join, it's also or their alternate. Okay, in case they are not here for the prequal, they extend an alternate, like Charlie or somebody. That's, I'm sorry.
No, okay, I just want to let everybody know, this is completely established by statute. Has to be done. It's to one day of going through certain bids or sub bids or what have you. And this statutory says that there's four members and who has to be involved. So it's a formality. It's already been established. It's just a reaffirmation vote.
All right, need a motion?
Motion made.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? So you have your prequalification committee?
And that committee is meeting on this Monday, September eighteen. They've established the time for us.
Next, we already covered it was the groundbreaking status of the expenditures for the MSBA.
We have three expenditures, two from K B A, invoice number thirteen for an amount of nine hundred and sixty-five thousand, two fifty. That's for the month of July. And invoice number fourteen for nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars for the month of August. Also Suffolk has a submission for fifty thousand dollars for the month of August. We do have a Colliers bill, but it lies below, so it's not included.
Any motion to approve those expenditures?
Motion made.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Oppose? All the matters B, personnel, Mr. Bentley?
Yes, as you, the committee can see that there have been a number of appointments. Some that are regular and normal, as we're working into curriculum, as you see, mentors as required by war. We also have sports. We've had a number of resignations, and of the resignations, we have filled all the positions with the exception of two from the guidance to power the secretaries. And there's our last two to fill. I don't think the committee has any questions.
Any questions or comments on that? Seeing none. Moving on to three point one, other matters C, L P N, administrative assistant.
That can be passed and put forward to the next meeting. We will not be dealing with that tonight, and I'll explain in the executive session, but we will not be coming back to that this evening.
All right. We have three point one D, discussion approval of webmaster position. Mr. Bentley?
Yes, for the committee, the position of webmaster has been with us for many, many years. The person who has done it was appointed by just a letter. However, I'm not comfortable with exactly that process. I much prefer that it be posted with a notice of vacancy, which you do have in your packet, and that the person applies, and then there is an interview and a selection. I can't say that the webmaster has continued his duties as he's been going along, figuring he was there. But in a note that I did come across, there was no official posting. This is not part of a union position. It's not part of the D T A. It was outside of this as an independent person working for the district in keeping the web, our internet and our website up and active. If you look on the following pages, a suggestion of doing this is that because it is an independent situation, it would follow a format almost of an independent contract where there is a stipend that, as you see, attached to it. It is for school year. The hour of work, I'll just stipulate it as needed because it's stipend, so keep active. Keep active with the website, keep taking pitches or postings or whatever is needed, and then it is for one-year appointment. And this has been traditional, that he has been doing this for the past quite a few years. I won't give it a number because I'll be wrong.
All right, quick question. In here, we don't put who they report to or who is reporting?
They, I'm sorry, they do report to the principal, okay? As anything that's posted on the website must have administrative approval, and that lies with Andrew.
That was my second question. Get approval before it gets posted?
Absolutely. And any social media, anything has to be approved.
This is only the website, not social media, correct?
This is only the website, not social media, correct?
My only comment would be if the work year is ten months, up top it says July one to June thirty. I would suggest a twelve-month position to mimic the July one to June thirty. There are some things over the summer, especially going into the school year that we want, especially freshman parents, right there all over the website, that we're going to need updates in August especially. I would just suggest work year twelve months to mimic what you already have up top.
Okay, so we need to change the twelve months?
Do we, the salary's going to change, so we have to vote the salary into?
Yeah, that has to come before the committee in order to vote that. This has been the same salary given to this webmaster for the last at least three to four years, at least. It has not increased.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the webmaster position?
I'll make that motion, and the only thing on our paperwork.
I have a question, though.
Yeah?
If we're changing it to twelve-month position, is it salary? Should we change the salary?
No, I don't recommend that. I recommend that the salary be a stipend position for the length of work and the hours put in.
Okay.
Do we know how many hours per month work for each individual?
I can't give you a real fix on that. I'll look for help if I can. I can't give you one because it varies, okay? Summertime, not so much. During the course of the year, like today, he was contacted and he reached out saying, do you want me to start taking pictures of the shops? And start getting those new pictures of the new students inside the shops up on the website. So it goes cyclical. We have events, he's there for, we don't have events, it kind of slows down. It does vary.
He takes the photos himself and uploads them?
It's a common, he does upload them. That's his responsibility, but the photos, because he's also involved as a photography of, not.
Video.
Video. He's also involved as a video advisor for the school, too. He does that also.
Or some be a he or she because some get posted?
Correct. The current one is a he, but it doesn't, correct. Whoever applies for it and gets appointed will be doing that.
So I'll make that motion of the salary at five thousand, and the work year would be twelve months, and everything else according to what we have in front of us.
Okay, I have a motion. I need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Oppose? All right, three point one, other matters E, use of facilities, Mr. Bentley?
This one, Diamond Football Team is requesting use of the cafeteria. Actually, it's one of the members of our alumni and of the Bank Bagel Foundation and also the building committee, who has for the last several years has prepared pizza and that for the athletes prior to a game. It's a little bit of a starch buildup for them, a little bit of camaraderie, and she provides all the food for them. It's in our school cafeteria. They're responsible for setting up, serving, cleaning up. There's no machinery or anything else involved in this. It's the me, eat, and go.
Okay, recommendation is to approve.
Make a motion.
Just a second?
Could have changed that one, there's no nine thirty-five, is that nine fifteen or nine fourteen?
That probably should be nine thirty.
No, because then it goes on after. It's nine twenty, then nine twenty-seven, so. Fifteen till the fourteenth.
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Thirteen, Helena?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
What?
I'm thinking of what? Trying to lengthen on months.
Don't do that.
All right.
I'll make that motion.
Need a motion, need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Oppose?
Thank you. The second one that comes before you is from the Rotary Club. This has been an annual request for their pancake breakfast. They're looking to use room two fifty-one on November the fifth, two thousand twenty-three, six thirty, morning to one thirty in the afternoon. And that my recommend, as you see, my recommendation is there, but I'll answer questions first.
I'll make that motion approve.
Need a second?
And this would be to waive all fees with the use of the facilities.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? F, the Diamond Bagel Education Foundation?
The Diamond Bagel Education Foundation was sad to report the passing of attorney Richard Urban, who was one of the founding members of the Bagel Education Foundation. Several of the members, Klaus Leiko in particular, and Ed Hill, came forward asking if they could do something in his memory. And what they proposed is that they are making the following donations in memory of attorney Richard Urban. That they would like to donate a saw to the carpentry shop, of which he was a member, a student here when he was, when he was a student, he was in carpentry. They want to do something there. For the soccer team, they would like to do T-shirts with an R U on it, standing for his initials, at a cost of four hundred dollars. And then for automotive technology, they want to do hand tools. Each of the areas in automotive technology, if you're familiar with the shop, there's like a ninth, tenth, eleventh, cross grade setup down in that shop. And each one has a unique set of hand tools for the type of work that they're working upon. If you're working on brakes, which is a sophomore, sophomore year, I believe it's in the sophomore curriculum, they would get tools just for that. So they do want to pick a year, get a set of hand tools with quite a bit of money, and donate that. That's through courtesy of a fundraiser, which they have in November, which is their comedy night that they're having at McGovern's Restaurant. You're all invited at forty-five dollar ticket. This is a commercial message for you, that you are invited, tickets are available. But the donations from that are going to go towards purchasing, buying the tools for the automotive shop, and they would like to do that. For the committee, as for the recommendations that the committee.
If you have the tickets.
I will get the tickets for you. No, they're online, okay, at the Diamond Bagel Education Foundation. But before you leave tonight, I will give you a flyer so that you can see it. That way, I'll put one in your hand.
Great. Thank you. Recommendation to accept the donation?
Motion made.
Need a second? All in favor? Aye. Oppose?
Thank you on behalf of the foundation. I'm thrilled that the family of Richard Urban appreciates that.
Next is G, out-of-state travel.
We do have out-of-state travel. Is that they have already done this. The Culinary Arts Department submitted an out-of-state travel form before. I think I talked to you, Mr. Chairman, that they had gone over there. It was for the purpose of securing jobs for our students. Happy to report that three students went over. They've all been hired over there. In fact, we have nine more coming up, but that'll be in another request. So this is to reaffirm something that has already occurred and was very successful.
Recommendation to approve.
Motion made.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Honor roll?
If you look at the page afterwards, it has, with white, looks like an email. This started with the, one of our guidance counselors, who noticed that the honor roll was somewhat stagnant, and it hadn't been updated in a while. He, together with fellow guidance counselors, approached Mr. Rabello, approached myself, and said, I have a proposal. The honor roll was determined locally. And it's our decisions as a school district on how we want to list students receiving honors. And he made it a very simple proposal, which was, and you see it there, if it's all eighties, you are on honor roll. If you're all nineties, you're on high honors. And he says, and that cuts out anything that does well if you get a ninety, but it's balanced by a seventy, or an eighty-five, balanced by a sixty-eight. And it gets complicated with a mathematical formula. He says, he had proposed, let's just make it simple. If they have eighties, they're honor students. If they're nineties, they're high honors students. Kind of like that. So taking it in the background and discussing it, we took it to our data person to say, can this actually be calculated that way? And the answer was, of course it can, because it's a local decision. But because this is a change in the way that we have done the honor roll, I bring it before the committee for their questions, our answers, and for your approval, as this would benefit more students.
Any questions? I do, I think it's a great idea, do it that way. If a student, so it's not being averaged out?
Correct.
So if student has an eighty in four subjects and seventy-nine in one, they don't make it? So it's just?
This standard would be, here's the threshold. It's not our average of grades, it's all grades.
Even if they have a ninety-nine in four subjects and eighty-nine in one, they get just honors?
They get honors. Because in order to get to that next plateau, everything had to be at that threshold.
Okay.
I think it's a good idea. I think one of the other things with, to dovetail onto this, is we need to look at our National Honor Society and how that's calculated, because that's calculated currently on our GPA.
Yes.
And our GPA tends to run a little higher than some of the other schools surrounding us. And I think it limits some of our students from getting National Honor Society.
But is the National Honor Society a national mandate? They have their own requirements?
No, we can, we can put our own parameters in place for that. Something to look at. I know it's something that I've looked at in years past. Just to kind of go, and I know, you know, our Honor Society director who manages that is fantastic, but it's just something to work at to give the opportunity for some of these other kids who do work very hard to be able to attain National Honor Society as well.
That's fair.
Absolutely. You can check on that and get back to the committee.
Absolutely. I'll turn it over to First Andrew and to the N H S advisor to look into that, absolutely, yes.
All right, need a recommendation to approve the new honor roll?
Motion made.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Next, I substitute and student work.
For the committee, you hear so much about how much do substitute teachers make, what's going on. The committee has the right to set and to be notified of what the rates of pay are for our employees. This is what our substitutes make inside this building. And we have various categories here. We have substitute nurses, we have substitute teachers, which is our daily subs. We have long-term substitute teachers, and I'll explain that in a moment. And we have long-term administrative support staff substitutes. So. Yeah, the numbers on the long-term substitute for the committee has been juxtaposed. It is not two five one, it's two one five. That goes along with, it's only on, it's only on September, it's only on September thirty-fifth, they get paid two fifty-one. Okay, so pardon, I pardon and apologize, sorry, please pardon me. But the substitute nurse and substitute teacher, substitute long-term, and this is what they get as a daily rate. So on a daily basis, when we call somebody into substitute for a teacher, those teachers get one hundred fifty dollars, those substitutes get one hundred fifty dollars a day. That's what they get.
What constitutes a long-term substitute?
Long-term substitute is some, one individual that's in a position for a period of a month. So, but a month is twenty days. So, for example, we currently have an individual out on a workman's compensation situation. We don't have a teacher that we have been able to fill that with, but we're filling it with a long-term sub, knowing that the situation's going to go this particular. it with a long-term sub, knowing that the situation's gonna go, this particular case has gone on for quite some time, but it's gonna go on for more than a month, we need consistency, and as a result, we get one person in there, but they now become responsible for doing more than, and I'll use the word, of just being caretakers, of watching the kids, they actually are teaching, consulting with lesson plans, they're doing grading, and they're responsible for that, all through and under the supervision of the department here, okay, so they don't do this solo, but it's a little more intense. The teachers do, the students rather, in those cases, know that this is, this is like the real teacher. And that's our rates of pay.
All right, so you just wanted to.
The recommendation, yes, is just to look at the rates of pay and to reaffirm the salary rate that we are paying per team for their work here in the building.
Any questions or comments?
All right, I know, Mr. Chairman, a couple of years ago, we, during COVID, we put in the one fifty and the two fifteen, where's the nurse's rate come from?
Okay, anybody who's on a long-term basis, we gauge that by looking at whatever first step is of the pay scale, divided by a hundred eighty-three, and that equals their daily rate of pay, because we know they're going to be there on longer than just a daily, they're gonna be there for weeks, actually, they're gonna be there for at least a month, if not longer, and that's where the substitute nurse came from, that would be the first step of the nurse's pay scale divided by one eighty-three, came out to that.
Thank you.
And that, if we do post for substitute nurse, they do have to have the proper licenses to be in there, and that's why you see.
That is different than a long-term substitute, we prefer licensed candidates to be long-term subs, we can't always get them, but we'll have a commitment from someone who is good, engaging with students, and is committed to be there over a period of time.
All right, any other questions? Eric, I need a motion.
I'll make the motion to reaffirm the current rate as listed above.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? I oppose. All right, J twenty-three, twenty-four, school year calendar change.
This is due to the groundbreaking which I previously mentioned, we are going to have school dismissed that day at eleven AM, it was not on the original school calendar, so it must go before this committee for their approval. My recommendation is that if that school is dismissed at eleven, because the contract states that teachers are allowed to leave when a school day is dismissed early, they actually have the ability to leave at eleven fifteen, and that is on this paper in front of you two. Of course, I'm asking them all to participate, and I'm having some preliminary things that we're already working on, on how to engage them for the day. I will come across with them as, again, something I've said, this is a once-in-a-lifetime event, there will not be another groundbreaking event, not my lifetime, anyway, and that this is something they want to be involved in, take pictures of, hang in their classrooms, whatever they're going to do, this is at the starting point, who's on this for this?
Recommendation to approve the proposed eleven AM student dismissal, need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
And behind that was the calendar reflecting how it would look on that day, which is November three, it's a Friday.
Three point one K, monthly financial report, Mr. Kitchen.
It's an informational item, it's the first one for the school.
The number's getting smaller.
You're doing that on purpose, aren't you?
You're making them smaller on purpose.
Really, it's just informational, there's no logic expenditures that we even cover or anything, so. I do anticipate maybe some changes next month, with some of the educational shops up, we were, by buying some of the equipment through the skills, mostly metal fab and the skills grants, or Kirkens, or the donation that we received last year, those freed up some money, so that might move some money into their supply lines, or into their field rep line.
Whoever's getting the money to fund the sports renting of fields and transportation, what does that cost us?
Transportation, I do not know exactly what it is, I can get that to you, Father, it's two buses every day, so I think the buses are around two fifteen a day.
So two fifteen each bus, each bus each day?
Each way, or?
Each day.
Each day.
Yeah, that, so, they're running to Brickland, or they're running to Travassos Field, or they're running to Swansea, obviously Swansea has mileage attached to it. And renting other fields was budgeted because we had the Y already established, and it's just the Conley is only fourteen thousand because it's only games, and then the parks are free, so, it's not, it's not, it's not a huge burden right now, if we were to go to, you know, all practice at Grath Conley, then it would be, then it doesn't be something.
Have we incidented any negotiations at all with Conley, but you said there, facilities for all our sports?
We discussed it, but, the figure was still the figure, eight hundred a day.
Not negotiable?
Well, I'm sure everything's subject to negotiation, but that was what their proposal was.
And who does that, the administration, that was that common?
Not the diocese.
The diocese, yeah.
Well, I did, and the reason I asked, because someone brought to my attention, and clearly I work for the diocese, but, that they're charging different rates for, as I mentioned, for different groups.
And it's a big difference than we originally thought.
We have, we have, we have an obligation, but we have a commitment to use, the YMCA for the spring, actually, so.
Right.
And the city has been, I'd say generous with Travassos and Brickland, you know, to allow us to then access the fields.
I think I mentioned it to Greg and to Brian, that I got a phone call from a parent, well, several phone calls from a parent, about football players being hurt on the field that they were using for practice.
Yes.
That I do know.
But I believe that was taken care of.
That was, that was at Talbot, okay, and the last that I was more of speed, if you can tell me up more on that, Andrew, was that the athletic director, Bailey was working with a company in order to, this dirt, they're available to spread the dirt, and to compact the field, I have not heard anything.
For his day using Talbot for practice?
Yes.
Was it an unlevel playing field?
Didn't they say any lord?
It would divv it, it would divv it.
There were ankle sprains, we were seeing a lot of.
Maybe not, go ahead, Henry Lord, for practice?
There was discussion of that.
It was discussed, but we haven't.
They didn't go there?
No. We've discussed that.
For any practices?
Okay.
Does the, I'll ask this, does the committee want the athletic director at our next school committee meeting, in order to report out on anything with the fields?
That would be, that would be nice.
I'm asking, yes.
I think so.
I mean, this is, sports are an essential part of the high school experience, but we knew that the next forty years are going to be cultivated, we just want to make sure that they have the best possible experience with that. I mean, and it is, I mean, when Jeff brought up, I mean, if more kids were being cut than normal because of busing, is that something we should look at? I mean, are we cutting more because we can't bus them all?
I think that was one of the reasons, Father, I think also, that number that you heard was also due to the fact that near a hundred kids came out for volleyball for three levels, can't take a hundred kids on three levels of volleyball, so, I think that was more of the reason than actual busing.
And that's the reason, that's fine, Jeff, I think if we're.
Ten record levels of people, or students come out, and I think, you know, they're wanting to be more.
I don't think they cut anybody from football.
They don't cut from football.
They didn't cut from football. How'd you do with soccer?
They don't cut from cross country. Soccer were okay, girl's soccer were more than okay, and volleyball was the big cut.
Golf.
Golf. Thirty, yeah, like thirty something.
That's good, that's good, the kids getting involved in the school is awesome.
And I know, Dr. Mira mentioned, in our last meeting, we're talking about concussions, and increased concussion rates, and so on and so forth, I've been, I've spoke with Mr. Bentley, as well as our athletic director, regarding the guardian helmets that some of the other communities are using for practices, that have been actually recommended by the NFL, and I know our athletic director is looking into, and has, I think has a quote
He does.
On pricing for the guardian helmets to use, which is just a, it's a sleeve essentially, if you've never seen it, it goes over the top of the helmet, and the NFL recommends using it during the practices, no one's using it for games right now, in my research, there was one school out in Montana, I think it is, that started using them for games, but it doesn't seem like the MIAA has, has a real stance on them yet, they haven't put anything out in literature, but I think if, if it decreases the, you know, concussion rates, especially during practices, we should definitely invest in something like that and move forward.
I think, well, you've already budgeted, you've already allowed a certain amount to come to fruition with regards to these helmets.
What was the price on them? Of those socks, fifty-eight hundred dollars, to help with the.
Over the box, yeah.
So, but if, again, I'm, I'm not telling you you have to have them, but if you'd like, Mr. Bailey here, before the committee to answer some of your questions about extracurriculars, or cuts, or involvement, or sports, or injuries, I know he'd be happy to be here, he probably isn't happy I'm saying that, but I know.
Well, if that's something we're gonna move forward to, I mean, to push it off to the next meeting is senseless, because it could be almost like a football season, so.
Well, we have three more football seasons to go before we can use our field yet.
That's true, too.
And I do that, this committee is gonna have questions, because for the next three-plus years, you're gonna be offsite.
True.
And you want to just have, you know, how are our athletes doing, what's the participation level, what are the injuries, and that, and so on, so I think it's important that the committee hear from him, because he's dealing with it on an everyday basis.
Okay, and just for Dr. Mira, and I think, Andrew, you can speak on this, because I talked to Mr. Bailey, I think that the rates with concussions, I, I think we actually found out that it was a decrease, am I not, am I not saying that correctly? So the general public can know that, even though we are doing the helmets, but at least we don't have that kind of situation where kids are getting hurt, that's what Mr. Bailey told me, just in a conversation, so, so the general public can know the kids are doing okay, even though we probably do need those new helmets, I think you got them right, kids.
Did we order those? Did we order the socks? For the helmets?
The socks, no, the helmets, yes.
New helmets.
New helmets.
She definitely paid for the socks, the socks.
He's tired.
So we go to new helmets?
There was a question, Mr. Bailey, to order, there was a few of them, there wasn't, not bald helmets, he selected a different helmet.
Because the last, the last I heard, we had ordered some helmets, and they were all, like, large size and extra-large size, and they didn't fit any of our students, the ones that they had just recently gotten in, were, that's what.
I rely on the coach.
Right.
I think he's accurate, I think, I think that the last time, I don't think it was since Mr. Bailey's here, but the last time they ordered helmets, that they ordered an excess number of extra-large helmets, and it turned out that they weren't used, no one could fill them.
Yeah. We went to the previous. The new, the new order.
There's been two orders. There's been an order that was available at the beginning of this season, and they just recently ordered a smaller number of helmets.
Can we sell back all those unused new extra-larges? And convert it to maybe?
I don't think anybody.
Now, the technology changes, every year they come out with something new.
We talked to City Auction Specials.
Okay, so, next, we will.
I will, well, Mr. Bailey will be informed to be.
You should actually speak to spring, for the spring class.
Okay. Right. All right, next, expenditure approvals, Mr. Kitchen.
Expenditures that are over ten thousand dollars, we've dealt with the MSBA items, NEDP, which is the removal of waste, these are for the crops, for the most part, over the whole tech, pumping out the same drives, plumber's supplies, equipment for H-bag, home end is a supply for H-bag, that is out of the fidelity assets. Assessment Technologies is testing down at LPN, Stray is our oil contract, Kitteridge is coming actually out of Skills Capital for new reach and freezer, welding supply, there are, this is coming out of Skills Capital also, grant, so there are twelve small workstations that they're using, for freshmen in the sophomore area, and then four larger tables for, they have adjustable dies, so they can do that, and then the one fourteen are small multi-nick tick, and I think stick torches, for the multi, multi-tools by Lincoln, those are going off the bid, and Science Department is the food science program, and the last two, St. Anne's and Dr. Scheffler, which are contracted services for special ed.
Okay, recommendation, any questions or comments? In a, in a motion to approve the expenditures?
I'll make that motion, except for the top three, which we've already approved, suffix cast and boost cast.
Yep, you got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. All right, M, FY twenty-three, any transfers?
As a recommendation of the auditors, what we try to do is transfer funds as they close out to zero out all the accounts, basically balance them out, so, the top section is salary lines, so we're transferring to these lines, and from the teacher and food service line, which had some excess funds there. The second section is operational, and a lot of this is mostly, the expenditures are due to equipment purchases at the end of the year, and the lines are mostly benefit, it benefits lines, so you see the funds are available inside of the insurance lines, and then maintenance of the equipment contract.
All right, need a motion to approve the transfers?
Motion made.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Then we have the reaffirmation of the bid award.
This is what I had mentioned about the welders for.
Just with the grant?
Yeah, yeah, this is out of the Skills Capital, so, what we did was we put out the multi-matic tools, and then COBOT, which is a robotic arm for welding, and that is the lowlands, the only bidder was total welding supply out of East Freetown, and the sum was one fifty-three, six by four, point seven three, and then there were the segment tables, which I had mentioned, I apologize on the quantity, there are twelve in each of the sections, so there's twenty-five, and three of the larger tables for eighty-six, two four nine, again, total welding, had the best price, we actually contacted SEAT members, and total welding was less expensive than the distributor.
All right, recommendation to approve rewards?
Motion made.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? We have, oh, surplus equipment, Mr. Kitchen.
When, the practice is that we're buying new equipment, and then we have a Sunday equipment within the shop, so most of the items are coming from metal fab, and you'll see that there's a few oscilloscopes from electronics cafeteria, had some robot choppers downstairs, the one item that I'd like to scrap are the cash registers, because they're just unsold, they're sitting there, they've been there for quite some time, and then there are a lot of items, law and mores, and actually, we did get rid of the aluminum ventures already, so, down the field, so, so it's supposed to be surplus in the auction, on the reverse side, we have sixteen IMAX, I think they're, they're not G twenty fours, but they're similar to that, we replaced our IMAX in graphic arts last year, over the summer, the technology team reset, washed them, reset them, I would like to make these available to students, and just have a drawing there, six to seven years old, but they're all in ones, so, my hope is that most of the graphic kids will try and get one, so it'll be, it'll be the IMAX keyboard and mouse, so we'll just have Mr. Machado have a box there, make an announcement, have any student that wants to, just put their name in it, and then we'll pull sixteen, and they're theirs.
All right, I need a motion to approve the surplus?
Motion made.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, P, National Grid Easement, Mr. Bentley?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I think you and I have spoken about this, this is coming from National Grid, as part of what we're working on for our building here, the new building, and they do need to have an easement granted, so that they can run electrical service on, on and through our property, and as a result, it requires a legal signing by the chairman of the school committee, and you see that as part of your package that you have.
And this easement was recommended through the, our project manager, as being necessary for the new building, new school, so, and I just wanted to make sure it was safe to sign by the, a person that was authorized to sign, so, the motion can just be from the board to authorize the chairman to sign this easement for purposes of National Grid.
I'll make that motion.
Need a second? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. The LPN program, I think.
You do have a paper indicating the LPN status as an opening day, actually, it's a little after the opening day, but they are, I would say, in very good shape, they have forty full-time students, they have sixteen part-time students, this turns us to fifty-six to stop off the school year, as you see for the.
What was their goal?
The goal was, they're on goal, they were hoping for fifty full-time, they're at forty, they were hoping for fifty full-time, those are the daytime students, forty was actually very reasonable, because they shot for that last year and fell short on opening day, so this year they were determined to get their forty, and they did, she achieved that. Sixteen was what they were looking for, and they achieved. Sixteen was what they were looking for, and they achieved that. So this fifty-six is the highest number that they've had in the last several years.
Great.
Which is good.
Good. Any questions, comments? None. Move on to our house building, super community reports.
Mrs. Ferris is here, so I'm gonna ask her if she could just go over the community projects.
Gentlemen, our community projects you have in front of you are the ones that we carried over from last year. We're in the process of starting on those again. We're already out at Westport. We're continuing with the bathroom installation at the cemetery, and we should be wrapped up there in November. With that, we have had a few more requests come in. That will be on your sheet next month, which has come in over the last twenties. So you'll see those, and then we're gonna be moving forward with all of these projects.
Any questions, comments on the projects?
And second, we had with us the owner of a resident at forty-one Bentley Lane in Westport, and he's looking to construct a three-story garage and a pool house on the rear of it. Mr. Ball was here at our meeting, and it's something that his students can do. He's currently working with the town of Westport to get permitting, and they'll be speaking more with Maria and Greg about the contract, and we're hoping to get this all going by the middle of October. Well, we gave them a date, middle of October. Hopefully, by the beginning of October, we can get out there and get going. He's working on all the finer details, and Maria's gonna keep us abreast of what's going on there. Do we need approval?
Yeah, we do. So the subcommittee took a vote?
Yep, subcommittee took a vote in three to zero. We agreed, this is a great thing for the students to get out and do. The height of it, I know some of us are concerned about height, the height is no higher than twenty feet. So it's workable for our students to be able to move in and build this building.
So looking for.
Looking for, looking for a vote. Mr. Chairman?
So I need a motion to approve the project?
Approved.
Need a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, pass. Anything else on the house project?
That was it, that was the chairman.
Any other questions? None. Moving on to assistant superintendents will report, Mr. Rabello.
Thank you. So really wanna shape these reports kinda into three buckets each month. Preparing our students to be life-ready, our student achievement, our continued excellence, and then our community and parent partnership. Last meeting you heard about our summer program, Bengal Challenge, was incredibly successful. At the start of this year, we held our success and expectations meetings with each grade level detailing our expectations. A good way to start the year and set the tone off right with students. But the exciting one today, and you may have seen the press release already, for the second time in school history, Diamond has been named one of the best schools in the nation. So it's twice in three years that the U.S. News has deemed us as one of the best high schools around, and.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you all. Congratulations to all of you and all the teachers and students. It's really a testament to the hard work that's happening every day. You know, these meetings, they're from the thirty thousand foot view, but what we talk about here really sets the foundation and direction for our students and teachers, and you're seeing the outcomes, right? We don't talk enough about some of the outcomes that we have, and one of them is that we have one of the best high schools in the nation here. So we should celebrate that. But you do see number nineteen, best school in the Providence metro area. That's ninety-five total schools. We're top thirty-seven percent in the nation, and then you see six thousand nationally there. And I believe that's out of twenty thousand high schools. Preliminary MCAS data is looking very strong. We're gonna have some very successful news here in a couple months. I think last year we came with the accountability data from all four towns, and where we ranked, we were at the top. And we talked about, we only have ninety days to do it. So that data is embargoed right now, but it is looking strong, so we'll come back with that data soon. Niasq is starting with our teachers, that's our self-reflection, that's the accreditation company that comes down and accredits our high school. It's gonna be a lot of work this year, but we've started that process. We had a great turnout for freshman parent orientation, over six hundred attendees. Our family connection website is going to be continuing to release some newsletters, and we're gonna be doing some parent forums. And our partnership with Health First, that's the first-of-its-kind school-based health center. So kids don't have to pay copays and go see a doctor elsewhere. That's still in the process. We're just waiting for Department of Health approval for that, but we should have some news on that soon.
Any questions or comments? Thank you for your report. Moving on to superintendents' report, Mr. Bentley?
Thank you. Very briefly, for admissions, we just heard about the LPN, noticing on the high school. Noticing how much care that we have taken as a district to focus in on recruiting and retaining students. We did have a commitment for a freshman class of three eighty-five. We are at three eighty-two as we sit here today. But that number's gonna go up very quickly. Total enrollment for opening day was one thousand four hundred fifty-three. That's a very high number. As we sit here today, it's fourteen fifty. So we are losing some students, but we're gaining them right back. There are students very willing to come to Diamond and want to come to Diamond. On that note, it's not on here, but the sophomore and junior transfers that were allowed by this committee to try that, it's been very successful. Students are wanting to come to Diamond, and this is allowing them the opportunity to come in, not as a freshman, but to come in as a sophomore or a junior, it's successful. Coupling with what's been announced by Mr. Rabello, but I heard from one south coast, that Diamond was picked as an Apex Award winner. This was based on the school's commitment to the community and the service to the community. There was a form I had to fill out, it was voted by the chamber. They do have a breakfast to give us our award coming up in December thirteenth, seven thirty in the morning. If you would like to go, you can notify Helena or myself, and I'd be glad to get you a ticket in order to attend this breakfast. It's a brief ceremony, it's early in the morning, which is my style, and let's get on with our day. The last thing that I have on here came from the Alumni Association has sent me an email request hoping that they can continue to use room two fifty-one for their monthly meetings. John Rivera, the president, did say that they've been using it right along, which I do know. I did grant that approval, but I also know that it needs to be reaffirmed by the committee. And this has been ongoing since the alumni has been in its existence. They have used that. I did stop in at their meeting the other night. They're very concerned, and they're very anxious, and they're looking forward to the new school.
Should we make motion to allow that to continue?
You didn't have the, on the use facility?
I did not, because this, it came in, it came in as an email, and it was an ongoing, it's an ongoing. The history on this is that it's an ongoing request to be due automatically every year. They don't formally do something to something. From my history on this, is that they send off an email saying, is it okay if we can use this for our meeting? They don't do anything, they don't serve anything, but in my opinion, it seems to be appropriate.
All right, you made a motion to allow that.
I'll make a motion.
Need a second?
I appreciate that, and I know the alumni does.
All in favor? I oppose. Who else said you did it? It's official.
Thank you. Very happy to get that.
One quick question on the monthly enrollment report.
Yes.
For twelfth graders, did we lose students from the eleventh to the twelfth grade? Because it seems like it's a drastic drop in all communities.
For twelfth grade enrollment of, if we look at what we have, three hundred thirty-nine is actually high. That is, if you'd like a comparison to where we opened up last year to this year, I'd be happy to.
No, I'm just looking at the tenth grade, it's an eleventh grade, and then it's off. I'm just wondering if we're losing kids between eleventh and twelfth, or that's what we more or less had last, last June thirtieth?
It's a little higher than last year.
It's a little higher than that.
Some of the might be too are increasing enrollment already. It's two, four years ago, we were bringing in a whole, some, you know, less students.
Are you questioning if we're losing students from?
Eleven to twelfth grade.
From eleventh to twelfth grade?
Now, traditionally, we lose students between tenth grade and eleventh grade. That's been our biggest drop, and that's why the ask was to have juniors, they could transfer in and rework our vocational programs in order to fill those spaces in vocational programs where there is a space, and students can gain a skill.
So you're willing to take kids in?
Absolutely, and we have done that. I don't know how many exactly, but maybe Mr. Rabello knows exactly, but I know it's been a few, and he did more today.
About ten.
I think the question would be, how many eleventh graders did we end up with last year?
Right. So when did we end up last June with eleventh grade, and what did we open up with this year? That's easier than.
Sure. All right, any questions, comments on the superintendents' report? Moving on to the calendar events.
Calendar events are pretty normal and ordinary. I do think, though, on your school committee meeting schedule, you'll see a correction that has been done. That's placed out there, if you look at a separate page. And want to bring to your attention that in April, down the road, something is gonna probably have to be a shifting, as that is the same date as the outstanding vocational student awards, student, state student banquet, and it falls the same day as a school community meeting. This happened last year.
I was just about to say that.
It happened last year, yeah. You know, you set the calendar, and then they come out, which they would call us first.
From the date, I just, I'm away on vacation that week. I'm not sure when I'm back, because that's, the day after is the holiday, right? The day after is, the day after Veterans Day, I think, the tenth. I know I'm going away that week. I might be home. It's only five days, I'm just not sure when I'm going. I thought it was the sixteenth, I didn't plan it. But I'll work it out. I'm just saying, I'm not a hundred percent sure, because I think the tenth is Veterans Day, right?
Yes. Is everyone okay moving to the sixteenth?
No, they moved it, they took it from the sixteenth. I won't remove anything. I'll figure it out. I am not, I was planning to be back for the sixteenth. I'm away until the fourteenth.
Are you away on the ninth?
Yes, we.
Well, you're both away. Are we all free on the sixteenth?
I'll be back by the sixteenth. Why'd they take it off the sixteenth, Don?
It was an error correction, because the ninth is actually the seventh Thursday of the month. So it was an error.
Don't do it on my accord. I think I'm all right, but Don's, I'm not sure. I think I might be coming back the day before or that day.
Well, you wanna make the change now?
Yeah, sixteen.
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 Sixteen. Sixteenth of November will be the official day?
Yep.
I'm definitely back for that. I know that Friday is, the tenth is Veterans Day, followed it.
Oh, that's right.
That's why I think.
You crossed around that enough.
And December, we're moving up from the seventh to the fourteenth.
Again, it was just an error.
Yep.
Would you send that out on the calendar? Thank you.
All right, what's in December? What's that, the white, what is that? What is the date? December what? Fourteen. Fourteen. Right here. No, 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 the whites.
All the whites.
Whites.
Oh, no, that's the thirteen.
That's summer thirteen, June. Thirteenth is the break, it's their whites.
All right, and, Mr. Chair, since we're on schedule, do we wanna take up the April one? Or do we wanna just leave it as is for now and then?
Is it too far away for everybody to check their calendars for April? You wanna wait?
With school vacation, is that school vacation week in the way?
No, not this one, no. This is the state OBS ceremony.
The week after is.
The week after is school vacation week, so it's.
So it's happened last year, and I think the committee went earlier.
Early, I was just gonna say, we have to go to first Thursday of the month?
I think we end up doing like that Monday or Tuesday of that week, of that second week. Because it was right after elections.
We did, we did it Tuesday.
Yeah.
I can do the fourth, the first Thursday.
Thursday.
All right, if we, if we can move, keep to a Thursday, we.
April fourth.
Sure, April fourth.
No.
April fourth, you said?
April fourth.
April fourth.
April four.
The eleventh.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, just to remind everybody, October fifth is the hall advisory board meeting.
Is what?
The hall advisory board. And do we have any other? So we have a reason to go in?
Executive session, yes. We're not gonna go in for the, for the, Brian, is there a need to talk about the webmaster? Or are we gonna take the open session?
No, webmaster is fine.
Okay, so we're not gonna go in under provision B, excuse me, paragraph B. We're gonna go in executive session under paragraph C pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Theory A, section twenty-one A, paragraph three, discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may be detrimental to effect in the bargaining, all litigating position of the public body, the chair so declares. That will be discussed in ASME and the DAA, and there will be no votes in leaving executive session.
Need a motion to go in, Mr. Decker?
Motion made.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? I, I, roll count.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Vidiassio?
Yes.
Mr. Vigent?
Yes.
Ms. Menard?
Yes.
Father Jay?
Yes.
Dr. Nero?
Yes.